Ready, okay. Good morning and welcome to the Jutali 9th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, could we please stand for a moment of silence? And Supervisor Brown has a dedication this morning.
Yes, thank you. I'd ask that we offer this morning a moment of silence to honor longtime Cobb resident Marilyn Keys. She's the wife of retired Deputy Sheriff Bob Keys. And he was, most people in this room don't know him, some do, but most don't, but that was back in the day, I'm sure remembers.
Yeah, absolutely.
When he was the Cobb.
She gives you the awesome.
Yeah, unless you were out drinking at Dry Creek or something like that. But, not to say I ever did that, but it was back in the day when a deputy arrested a female, you go by and pick up your wife and you take her to the jail with you, so you have a female in the car that can be there to search and do all this stuff. So, there's some interesting stories by her, but she's gonna be missed.
Brock, can you please lead us in the pledge this morning?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number four, consideration of extra items on appearing on posted agenda. Any extra items? Five, approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that are seen as non-controversial. These items are approved by one motion unless somebody from the board wishes to remove an item for further questions or clarification. If anybody from the board wishes to remove an item? Any public comment on any of the items on our consent agenda? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for approval.
Madam Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.16.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are early for public comments, so we'll go to 7.2, consideration of advisory board appointments, geothermal advisory committee. Let me think. Let's see. The applicant is in District 1.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kyle Noble.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any public comment on this item? See no movement, bring it back to the board. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Still running early, we'll go to calendars. Supervisor Sabatier?
So, this afternoon, I plan, or this evening, I plan on going to District 3, over to the Moose Lodge for the wind turbine meeting for what, a planned project over at Walker Ridge. Tomorrow, our LTA APC meeting was canceled, so that will not be happening, but I will be going to answer some questions and talk to the Democratic Club of Lake County in the evening. I'll be with District Supervisor Crandall, District 3 Supervisor Crandall. On Thursday morning, I'll be going to the judge's breakfast, and in the evening, going to the Clear Lake City Council meeting, and that's all I have so far on my calendar until next Tuesday, and I'll be back on Monday to prepare for the Tuesday meeting.
Supervisor Simon?
So, Board of Supervisors meeting today, this afternoon, I have a couple of meetings with constituents on some concerns on projects down in South County. There was the Lake Transit Area Planning Council, but that's been canceled tomorrow. So, I'll be down in South County tomorrow evening. I have Lower Lake Action Committee group, and then Thursday, I'll be down, have a meeting with PG&E in the morning on Thursday to talk about a geothermal site down in our area that's been going on for years. And then Thursday evening, you have the math meeting. Friday, we'll be down at the Gibson Museum. Don't have anything Friday afternoon. Saturday, can do my best to get over and check out the rodeo here, the Lake County Rodeo. Got my tickets here on the table, and I'm gonna go check that out. Sunday, the 14th, don't have anything. Monday, back here in the afternoon, I have a meeting with Carol, and also have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting here on the, at the courthouse, and then back here Tuesday.
Supervisor Brown?
So, I have, following today's board meeting, I have some appointments to, that are scheduled in the afternoon, and then tomorrow, I will be speaking at the Republican Women's Organization, but I probably won't have anybody here with me. Probably be all by myself. And then I have a couple of appointments up on Cobb with constituents up there as well. On Thursday, I'll be meeting with constituents out in the Riviers regarding fuel reduction, and what the plan is as we move forward through the summer. Trying to convince people now to kind of chill a little bit, unless you got a weed eater, or you're gonna do it by hand. And Friday, I'll be in Mendocino County doing some work over there on the 13th. On Saturday, I have the memorial service for Marilyn Keys in the morning, and then I have a memorial service in Fort Bragg for the wife of another friend of mine, and back in the office on Monday.
Supervisor Crandall?
So, following the meeting today, this evening, I'll be at the Walker Ridge Wind Energy Project meeting at the Moose Lodge. Tomorrow, I'll be at the Democratic Party with Bruno in Lower Lake. Thursday, I'll be on the North Shore, actually, I'll be in Clear Lake Oaks for a meeting there. Friday, I'll be in the North Shore for a meeting at Upper Lake, and then Monday, the 15th, the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority meeting, and then a meeting with Carol, and back here on Tuesday with the, for the meeting.
My calendar, after this meeting, I'll be attending agenda review, and then playing catch-up with emails and phone calls for the rest of the afternoon. Tomorrow, I'll be in the office in the morning, and then attending the Rotary Lunch at noon Thursday. There's a department head meeting. Is anybody else planning on attending that?
What is that?
That's on Thursday at 10:00. So, I'll be attending the department head meeting, and then I have a serendipitous meeting at noon, and an EPA meeting at 5:00 PM on that Thursday. Friday looks pretty clear, but I'm sure I'm gonna be filling that up with other appointments with constituents. Saturday, I will be attending the Family Resource Fundraiser in Finley, and then Monday in the office in the morning, and then the Hope Rising Governing Board meeting at 3:30 that afternoon, and then back here on Tuesday. With that, we'll go to our 6.1 item, 905. Any public input on items that are not appearing on the posted agenda? Okay. And then we're still early for our 610. What could we take up fast? By the time I figure this out, I don't think we have any items. Anybody else want to report anything else they did this last week for calendars? To push a minute, we need a minute.
Here, we can do 7.3.
You think we could do 7.3 fast? 7.3, consideration of memorandum understanding by and between the Lake County Correctional Officer Association and the Lake County, and County of Lake for July 9th, 2019, and the December 31st, 2019. Carol?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, before you today is a new memorandum with the Lake County Correctional Officers Association. This memorandum would run, if approved, would run through today, from today through the end of the calendar year, 12/31/19. Like the other units, this MOU adds the salary on promotion language that your board added to the personnel policy late last year, and it also provides for the vacation cash-out a one-time payment of 40 hours, since this unit is law enforcement employees, for those employees that currently have 200 or more hours of vacation time accrued. Most importantly to this union, the MOU amends the peace officer status for these employees to allow correctional officers to become peace officers under PC Section 830.1C, and because of that, there is a subsequent action that will follow this that would reclassify all of these employees to include the, to change their job title essentially to Deputy Sheriff Corrections. There is no change in salary for these employees, it's just a status change. This change would also give the sheriff more flexibility in the use of the staffing during certain kinds of emergency situations, and so those are really the highlights of what is included in this MOU.
Is there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Correctional Officers Association and the County of Lake for July 9th, 2019 to December 31st, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we can get back on track there. Our 6.2 item, our 910 AM item, presentation of proclamation commending and congratulating Lake County Rodeo Association on the occasion of its 90th anniversary. Rob Brown.
No, I haven't been here in 90.
90 of them. Well, this definitely isn't your first rodeo.
No.
Yeah, it's, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my honor to offer this proclamation commending and congratulating the Lake County Rodeo Association on the occasion of its 90th anniversary. Whereas the Lake County Rodeo Association was established in 1929 and is compromised of 100% volunteer organization, and whereas the Lake County Rodeo Association produces the annual Lake County Rodeo every year for the enjoyment of this American tradition by Lake County residents and visitors, and whereas the Lake County Rodeo Association is an invaluable asset to our community, and whereas the Lake County Rodeo Association will celebrate its 90th annual Lake County Rodeo on July 12th and 13th, 2019, at the Lake County Fairgrounds. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend, congratulate, and express its deep appreciation to the Lake County Rodeo Association for its 90 years of dedication to the preservation of this family-oriented, American-born tradition which instills the values of sportsmanship, integrity, and hard work, improving the caliber of the individuals who choose to participate, encouraging the citizens of Lake County to adopt and follow these same values, passed and adopted this 9th day of July, 2019. Thank you.
I'd like to announce, sorry. I know, I should know that. On behalf of the Lake County Rodeo Association, we express our appreciation for this recognition of this all-volunteer group. Little sales pitch, we are looking for more directors, so anyone out there in the public who would, who likes rodeo and who would like to be a part of our rodeo association, we welcome you with open arms. It's a lot of fun, and really not that much work. Don't tell our president that. I would also like to announce that we are very pleased and proud this year to have as our grand marshal Johnny Jones, a longtime Lake County resident. He lives in Kelseyville, he's been a farrier all of his life, and he's a wonderful example of how to live your life, set good examples for our youth, and we're certainly looking forward to enjoying all of the youth that have become involved. We have two Lake County students this year in high school rodeo who are going to the national finals, so it's a tradition that's not dying, we're trying to keep it alive, and so we're very proud of what we bring to the county every year. And I'd also like to announce that this year, our 90th rodeo is dedicated to the memory of Quincy Andrus, another resident of Kelseyville, who is really a true and quiet treasure for the County of Lake. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As the years go by, I like to get a little nostalgic on stuff, but when you talk about Johnny Jones, he was about three years ahead of me in high school, but he was, he's always been a friend. Now he's my neighbor, he lives at the other end of Coal Creek Road, but it's not, it's not just honoring somebody who has a horse and shews horses, he's a cowboy's cowboy. I mean, that's what he does. There really are cowboys, still left a lot of them, and he's one of them. And an interesting story that I think, find interesting is the Eli Stage House that most of you know. Well, the history of that, it used to be down right on Highway 29, and when we were all kids growing up, there wasn't a juvenile hall, that was the boys' home. That's where they took the boys, and Johnny Jones' family lived there, and they, it was a working boys' ranch, and they had all the kids from all over the place that got in trouble, they went out there and they worked at the Jones Ranch for a while, and most of them straightened out pretty quick. And Johnny, Johnny, Johnny was a big part of that, and a lot of people, even old timers, don't really realize that, that that went on here, and it wasn't that long ago, 50 years ago, so anyway, it was, he's a great guy, I just think the world of him.
Great, thank you. Any further comment on this?
If you don't mind my asking, how old do you have to be to be a director? 18 and over?
18 and over.
Okay, thank you.
The younger the better.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Ray and Emily Mayo, who are really involved in the sport already, and they're, they're young, and I think they'd be excited to maybe be a part of it if they have the chance.
We've sponsored Ray in the past, of course, old riding, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our 6.3 item, our 915 AM item, consideration of memorandum of understanding between Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake and the Lake County Sheriff. Sherry Treppa, if you want to join us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While we're waiting for everyone to show up, welcome, Chairperson Treppa.
Thank you.
So, this particular MOU, I understand, was under consideration when Chairman Steele was still with us, and it did not get completed and finalized, and so I worked on it with both the sheriff and Chairperson Treppa to bring it to your agenda today. Through this MOU, it is intended that the sheriff will consult with the tribe's executive council and commissioner to receive, to resolve consumer complaints related to the tribe's financial services. In exchange, the tribe plans to pay the sheriff $25,000 a year, and Chairperson Treppa may want to speak to it, as may the representatives of the sheriff's office here today.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity. This is basically just building on the strong government-to-government relationship our tribe has established with this county and the sheriff's department. It is in furtherance of the recognition of the county of the tribe's sovereign status as having the ability to enact laws, be governed by them, ensure regulatory compliance, similar to what we have with our casino. We have an online, we have an e-commerce business that we established back in 2012, and we have worked to date cooperatively with sheriff's department and with county to ensure consumer protection. Our regulatory body has established proper laws and protocols related to applicable laws that govern this space. It's all federal financial services-related laws. The tribe believes strongly that the quality of life here in county is partly, in part, because of the sheriff's funding, and we want to help that. We have a strong corporate commitment to this county and believe that we are, you know, doing everything we possibly can to ensure that the county is healthy, and this is one way that we can go about doing it.
Thank you. Anything you want to add?
And we greatly appreciate this donation, and we have a great relationship working with the tribe, not only this tribe, but all the tribes in the county. I think that goes to leadership of Sheriff Martin and the leaders from each tribe, and we've created a great working relationship related to these e-services. We have a good system put in place now over the last couple of years where it doesn't really affect us a lot, but we can get our information that we need from the tribe easily.
Sheriff Martin would be here speaking to it personally, but he's on a well-deserved vacation, so Lieutenant Polich and I are pinching for him today. Sheriff Martin has done more in the 30 years that I've been here at the sheriff's office than any other sheriff, on developing a relationship with the tribes and networking and collaborating with them, and Sherry Treppa has done a tremendous job in working collaboratively with Sheriff Martin on these issues, and this is a benefit to both organizations, and I would ask the board to support this MOU, and it's something that we do anyway, and don't receive any funding right now, and this would be a funding mechanism that would help our budget immensely and when these cases do come about, for us to help offset costs.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, I got a couple of questions, a couple of thoughts on this, and both, there were terms used by both that are kind of relevant to this, so we were talking about, you know, government to government, and we have arrangements with other governments like, you know, Mendocino through mutual aid and that type of thing, so I'm just wondering if there's some kind of thing that we can do, because this may become, I'm not sure what, what the other tribes do or how they work that, but if, you know, something that they'll eventually want to do, or somebody else, or some other business. And so, you know, we need to, you know, be thoughtful in how we present this so that we, because it's a precedent now that's opened up, and other businesses can say, you know, we can pay a fee, and I'm gonna use fee for now, even though the term donation was used, and I'm having a little issue with that, because we can't, we can't take a donation in return for services. So, as far as I know, I don't feel right about it, but I don't know if it's something legally that can be done, so maybe donation's not the right term to use. And if that's something that the board would be open to. The, the online aspect of it, I'm obviously not a lawyer or law enforcement, but from what I understand, the online aspect of it is handled federally. Is that correct?
The tribe has passed laws that include federal law in this instance, and it voluntarily abides by them, and through our regulatory commission ensures compliance.
That's not what I meant, that's what, I'm not talking about for you guys, I'm talking about any crimes committed. If somebody else, if somebody's committed a crime due to online, then it becomes a federal issue, if it's, if it's out of state, anything like that? Yeah, clear, clear that up for me.
Actually, what happens is with these types of issues with financial crimes, is identity theft goes with that. So, someone's identity is stolen, and someone tries to get a loan through their services.
Got it.
A report is filed, sometimes in other states, and then exported to the sheriff's office to do some follow-up on and try and look into see what happened if it was identity theft, or what the issue is with that report.
Do we do that now?
Yes.
And what is, do you have any stats at all to say what the outcome of that is, or does it go to the DA's office ever? I'm not sure.
No, not, rarely would that occur.
So, there's no?
So, these online businesses are subject to dispute resolutions, provisions that are pursuant to tribal law, but tribal law has adopted AAA arbitration and jams. Rarely does a, does a complaint end up in a dispute in, in that form, rarely. It's less than 1% of all, of all transactions that we do are complaint made.
So, then it's not a criminal, it's more civil?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're actually providing, we're like a civil agency more than criminal in that regard then?
In the instance that a complaint would come through the sheriff's department, yes, and it's been rare, less than five, I think, in, since 2012.
Okay, so it's not, wouldn't be a huge burden on the department, but I just, you know, the next business that comes in, you know, and I'm just gonna throw this out there because it's, it could be a reality, we could have a huge cannabis grower come in here and say, you know, I'm gonna give you $25,000, you're gonna be my police force. So, you know, how does that work? You know, ultimately, how does that work? That's what I want to know, and should we have a policy adopted for that kind of, and we already do, to some degree, with other government agencies, with, again, Mendocino County is the one that comes to mind, because I know that, you know, we have, you know, we have evacuations, they come over and help us, we pay them, we go over there, you know, it depends on the length of time, I'm sure, I'm not sure what all the details are, but I think there's, that's something that we need to consider, that we actually keep track of the time involved and bill accordingly. That's what we do with schools, that's what we do with, you know, you know, other agencies that we, we deal with, so it should be consistent, that's what I'm hoping that we do.
These mutual aid disasters are much different, these are federally declared or state-declared disasters, and there's regulations and rules in place that require the documentation for reimbursement processes. This is an agreement between the sheriff's office and the Habemotol tribe for providing funds to investigate whether a crime has taken place or not, and it's a simple reimbursement process, and this MOU fulfills that process.
Yeah, I get that. Yeah, the reimbursement is appropriate, and that's why we need to keep track of what it is that's being reimbursed. And we have other mutual aid besides disasters. Mendocino's come over here for, a lot of times, when, you know, when we've had, you know, a funeral for, for a deputy for training that, that was sheriff's office-wide, and, you know, I know they've done that, and I believe we've done that for them as well, so it's not just for disaster.
So, and just as a point of clarification, understanding you deal with other agencies and other businesses, but we're sovereign government, and we, we are doing this as a voluntary effort to try to help and contribute some funds to a department that needs it.
I'm not, I'm not trying to kill the process, I'm trying to make something consistent with what everybody else has to do.
And I appreciate that, and, and I'm just trying to differentiate what this is to other businesses. And we're already in a PL 280 state, so there is already jurisdictional relationships there. This is a means for the tribe to contribute to a department that badly needs the funds, and in exchange, you know, we understand that there may be times when they may need to be involved in a complaint, and so we're just trying to mitigate the impact of that as a sovereign government.
And something else, you know, with this money, she mentioned the Public Law 280, we like to train our deputies, as well as the other law enforcement personnel in the county and surrounding counties, how to deal with law violations on trust land, and so that's, sometimes we use this money to do that, to bring the training here, because it's unique to a small amount of counties in the state, so it's not something that's offered through post or anything where we can just send our officers that training, so we bring it here to the county, and we've done that quite a few times over the last few years.
And on a side note, we're getting grant funds for another PL 280 training, so we'll be doing something soon.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a quick question, because you said that it's not criminal and it's civil, because I would suspect that the investigation is investigating a potential criminal action. If you find positive results that there has been criminal activity, what does that get forwarded, who does that get forwarded to at this point?
If there's a suspect that's developed, and the suspect is either in Lake County, we would forward it to the Lake County District Attorney's Office. If it's a suspect that's in another jurisdiction, we may have to work with the federal government or a federal agency in order to try to get prosecution on this matter.
Gotcha.
Or forward that information to that other jurisdiction.
And because this is an online, this is where the likelihood that it's somebody here locally versus somebody anywhere else is much higher that it might be somewhere else.
Exactly.
So, I got, I got one more question, just, who, what would happen if, if there, before today, if you had gotten a call about this, what would, what would happen? You'd investigate it?
Same, that's the same thing.
Okay, then why don't we just investigate it, and they give you a $25,000 donation, and everything's clean? That's what it is, that's what it boils down to, so let's just call it what it is.
Because the sheriff has developed a relationship with the, and they're offering us money for, and this, this, and this is the only tribe that has this particular service in the county right now, and they are providing a financial means for us to investigate these types of crimes. If the other particular tribes had this service in their jurisdictions, and they offered the same financial incentive and offered us that, we would probably accept that as well.
Well, and the reason I'm saying that, not to be punitive, it's not, it's, I'm trying to, again, I'm trying to look ahead to the anticipated request by other businesses, and I've realized in some eyes, they're not the same, but they are the same. People have crimes committed against them, regardless of what their status is, they should be investigated equally throughout this county, I don't care who it is. And so, if we just say we're gonna investigate all crime regardless, and thank you for the donation, and a different, it's a donation, then if somebody else wants to make a donation, that's fine, but it's not, it shouldn't be attached to, we're going to investigate these crimes because we're getting a $25,000 check.
It talks about meeting and conferring regarding law enforcement and working collaboratively with our regulatory authority on establishing a process of communication.
I get that.
It's not, it's not down to the law enforcement level, it is a government-to-government relationship.
I get that, and I agree with, with Chris that Brian has done more than anybody could have ever done, and that would happen without the check. He would, he would do that. I get that, but I just, I don't know, I'm just trying to keep it, keep it to what it really is, and keep it clean, and... clean and, but I'm done. So if anybody else wants to add in...
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, and I respect where you're going with this. I understand what you're kind of thinking that it may imply for others to assume that they're paying, a business is paying the sheriffs to do their work or something of that nature, but they're one of seven tribes in the county, a very small tribe that doesn't necessarily have a land base. And so, like, whereas the tribe at Robinson, we would have a tribal police force that would conduct the MOU. There's also the state compacts that a lot of tribes have, you know, they've been a part of. However, a lot of the tribes in Lake County are non-gaming tribes. So that, before, there used to be a revenue distribution to, or a local distribution to the local forces where it would either go to the district attorney, the sheriff's department, or whoever else. And so I think with, now, I think this is just their way of trying to mitigate that unless they're doing that with their compact as well. But I think with this, they're just trying to solve a problem and, but I understand and respect what you're saying, Rob. I do get it. But it also, they do, the public 280 courses are usually conducted at your establishment most of the time. I know that when Sheriff Martin has those, it's in Upper Lake. So a lot of our people will go to those meetings as well. And so when Sherri had talked to me about this before, she had mentioned that it was just another way to help them pay for the services that they provide solely for, like a billable thing. So I just, I kind of get where we're going with this and I understand your concern, Rob, and I'm not trying to dispute it. I just, it's not going to be a situation where other businesses can come in or cannabis growers can come in and do that because they're a separate government, a small separate government at that. So I think there's like 200 to 300 members at most, right?
Less than 300 at this point.
Right. And so, you know, other tribes, they're different situations. It's not a one-size-fits-all. I know with my tribe, we have like 500 to 600 members and so it's different, you know, so.
But, okay.
Supervisor...
In response. Go ahead, Rob. Oh, I'm waiting for...
Oh, I thought you were going to respond to him first.
I'm going to if she's...
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, I'll let Rob go and then I'll go after.
What I'm suggesting is not denying them the ability for the sheriff. I'm not saying that they, I realize they're small and all this kind of stuff, but, you know, I'm trying to articulate this in a way that it's not, again, it's not meant to be punitive. I don't like the process, I don't like this part of it because of the precedent that it sets. Here's the thing, and I have to ask staff on this. If somebody's reimbursing, if the school reimburses you for fees incurred, where does that money go? Does it go back to the general fund? Does it go to the sheriff's department?
You have to give me an example of what the school reimburses for.
Oh, you know, they have deputies do security football games.
School resource officer?
Yeah. Well, no, like the football games and things like that.
Comes back to the...
Occasionally you do proms or...
Yeah, all that kind of stuff.
Comes back to the sheriff's office?
It does. Okay, okay. So that's not an issue then. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Because I was thinking, okay, well, shoot, this means that, you know, if it's for pay to reimburse us, it's reimbursing us, not the sheriff's department. Sheriff's Department doesn't pay for it. It's us. So, but if it goes to the sheriff's office normally, then that's dealt with. But I still, I still think that, you know, we keep providing the service that we always provide, whether we get paid or not, and they give you a very generous donation as they have many times in the past, and that's the way, you know, it should be handled.
This is not unlike the MOU that we have with regard to our casino. You know, it's to mitigate the impact of the business in the county. So we approached it in that manner that it is not government-related.
Good point.
It is a business-related and there are, there's going to be known expenses to the county. They may not be a lot, but, you know, there may be some and it's our effort to mitigate that impact, similar to our casino MOU.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, exactly what you said. It's mitigation of the off reservation impacts, bottom line. And what we're talking about is a sovereign nation coming in who's operating here in the county and mitigating those issues, just like we've done with the state of California with the MOUs. And this will be something that comes forward with other tribes as compacts are renegotiating, other things are happening, other tribes will be stepping up, these MOUs will be coming forward. This is one of the paths that we're on. So I think approaching it in this manner is the right way to do it. And potentially, there may be other tribes that get into this business or other ones that I think would help mitigate the off reservation impact issues because being called out or other things like that, you know, we, as a sovereign nation, this is the way that we are able to contribute. We don't pay taxes. We are not a taxable agency and this is an opportunity for us to set and to work out a negotiation with the local governments here and mitigate the off reservation impacts. And I think we're moving around the right path to do it. And like you said, there's already an MOU in place because of the compacts with the state of California. And this is the proper way to do it. I think setting up precedents, Rob. And the one difference, obviously, that you always need to really kind of educate yourself on is this is a tribally-owned business. This is not a for-profit individual business. This is for our government operations, just like the county receives property tax and other things. The amenities and the operations that we operate as tribal governments pay for our education, our roads, our housing. It's a government operation that funds the people of the tribe. And so this is just a way for us to communicate with the outside agencies that are helping us do those things and operate the businesses.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just wanted to add that I think kind of the opposite. I think it's a good precedent to set for, we're already doing the work and I'm sure if other tribes went into the same type of commercial industry, that you would also be providing the same service to those tribes if they requested a review of some potential fraud or identity theft. And so to set the precedent that we are looking for the next person to take on this type of service to maybe come up with the same type of MOU, that way we're not just providing a service to another sovereign nation without any kind of payment to come back. It's the job you're supposed to do. It's the community we have. You have to serve that community. But to set this as a precedent means that there's more likely a future precedent that others will want to do the same thing. And so I think that's, in the opposite, I think it's a good way to get this started so that we can look forward to more like this in the future.
We do also have one with North Shore Fire Protection District. It's very similar for service if we need it.
Supervisor Crandall?
I just thought of something and I'm bringing up TID for a reason and I don't want to stray off, but too far, but there's a similarity and analogy that I could use. The tribes don't, we, some of us have hotels and we pay into, we don't pay into TOT to the county. However, being a part of the TID group that we're meeting with the different folks that are a part of it right now, and that's potentially another way we'll be able to contribute to that faction in the county as well. I see this somewhat as a similar type of thing as whereas they're trying to write in some sort of way to help. And so that, because I just thought of it when Moe brought up, the fact that we don't pay taxes to the county in certain instances. So this is another way. But I think where Rob's coming from is the way that it's written and how it would look as a donation. He would rather see a donation rather than it seeming like we're having like these agreements in the MOU and whatnot. I think also, one of the things I know as a tribal leader, when we get into businesses and entities that we start, we have to have things written for the federal side of it and things like this is as an aspect, like local sharing and local contributions. We sometimes have to choose and pick different entities that we have to give to. Is that kind of what this is?
I'm sorry, I wasn't exactly following. I do, when we entered into the MOU with the county related to the casino, we did understand that, one, we're going to be taking land out of the tax base. There would be impacts. We, you know, approached it in a very transparent way to mitigate the impact of our casino. We approached Supervisor Steele last year when we were close to opening up our building. It's partially governmental, partially business, and wanted to mitigate the impact of it, whatever that might be. We don't believe it's significant, but we thought, you know, this would be a meaningful enough contribution. We didn't expect there to be a lot of collateral impacts other than sheriff, law enforcement. We expected, you know, fire protection would be something we would need. So we addressed both the agencies and tried to move forward with a contribution that would mitigate the impact of our business in this area. So that was, you know, with as much, I guess, transparency and wanting to be a good corporate citizen, approached the county. You know, it's always been our way to try to help where we can. We do like seeing some, something that recognizes us as a sovereign government and that's why it's built through an MOU and not just a direct, you know, contribution, which we do that as well, or donation, if you will. We appreciate that there is that government-to-government relationship and we like to document that wherever possible because that's what responsible governments do. Because we're not, I'm not going to be here forever, you know. Others will be in my shoes and having that formalized relationship is meaningful. And, you know, we try to do it wherever it makes sense.
Okay. For myself, Sherri Treppa, I really appreciate the partnership that you have with the sheriff and the county and I think this goes to benefit the whole entire community of Upper Lake County and I appreciate that. There's no further comments from the board. I'm going to open up to public. Is there any public comments or questions on this item? You could state your name and then limit it to three minutes.
I'm Joan Moss. I was a federal tutor at Elamini Colony for four years. I was a state tutor at Big Valley for two years and I was a GED teacher at Robinson. And I want, I think the public needs to understand what is public law 280. And I need to think the public needs to know that the Native Americans do not pay taxes. And I understand that Big Valley has a standing agreement that they donate funds for fire protection and law protection under state or federal law. I think this needs to be brought out and I commend your tribe for wanting to help. And if it sets a precedent, so be it. The Native American community and the casinos provide employment to both natives and non-natives and education. People like me work at tribes. So I think this is a really beneficial memorandum of understanding and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one statement from Joan that, you know, as individual tribal members, we do pay taxes. I wish we didn't, but we do. We pay individual taxes just like everybody else does. But the actual government, the tribe as a whole, is the one who doesn't pay property tax or other things like that. So individual tribal members like myself and others, we do pay our taxes. So we are taxed from the federal government, from the state government, depending where you're working at. So we have those taxes, but the actual government agency, our tribe, our federally recognized tribes as governments, we don't pay taxes as a whole, as a government. But just wanted to clarify that. So if you think we go around not paying taxes, believe me, we pay taxes. We do it every year. So just wanted to clarify that issue.
Supervisor Brown?
We could spend a long time clarifying things that are said by Joan, but I don't even got to begin. I'm just going to say, you mentioned that you won't be here forever and that's unfortunate because you've done a fantastic job. I can't even imagine what it would be like not having you in there to work with sheriff and all that. I don't support this, this MOU, but, I mean, no disrespect by that because I think that you're, everything that you're doing is what you feel is the best, but I just think that there's a different way that we could approach this that would be a little bit cleaner. I'm going to have people, and I guarantee it's going to happen, people that can't get a burglary report looked into because there's not enough staff time.
Sorry, your time's up.
Yeah. I wish. I've got 58 more meetings after today, so, anyway, thank you.
And just to that, I've heard of, and I haven't seen, I have not seen it implemented here in Lake County, but there are things like crime protection districts that have been done in business districts to try and get more funding for more police to go into certain areas. So I think that there's already other similar things.
We pay taxes already, you know, so.
But that would be an additional one too.
Nah, yeah, I get it. I get it.
Is there any further public comment on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it. Are you coming up for public comment on this item? No. But, seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve memorandum of understanding between the Hebemental Pomo of Upper Lake and the Lake County Sheriff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll go to our 6.4 item, our 9:30 AM item.
Madam Chair, before you move on, Chairperson Treppa, were you going to sign the agreement today? Carolyn Purdy has it for you if you would before you go. Thank you. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Nuisance abatement hearing request for Andrew Markell at 15284 Humboldt Exit Cobb, California, APN number 051-042-004. And I wonder if that was the applicant that just left.
In, yes.
Did somebody maybe let him know that we're on his item? The gentleman that just left with the red folder.
His name is what? Andrew Markell?
Yes. While you get set up?
Just hit this one, so I'll go back like that. Hello?
Welcome. Okay. Oh, we need to be sworn in. If anybody that's planning to testify on this item, if they could stand and raise their right arm. Hand, hand.
I'm sure that the testimony...
There's two, I got three calls the past two days of seeing one hand. That's why this is not a good item.
Thank you.
It's really unfortunate that these tenures are good.
Okay, we'll start with the county.
All right. So today we're, my name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm a code enforcement officer with the code enforcement division. Today, we're here in the matter of Andrew Markell and the property is 15284 Humboldt Extension Cobb, California. A notice of nuisance in order to abate was issued and Mr. Markell is appealing that notice. All right. So the notice of nuisance in order to abate was issued on May 2nd, 2019. The issue, the violation cited were Lake County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 21, Section 41.2, for a violation of open and outdoor storage, i.e. trash, junk and debris. We also cited him for a violation of Chapter 21, Section 10.20, for permanent occupancy of a dwelling that does not meet minimum residential construction standards. And just to kind of give you some background on the codes, Chapter 21, Section 10.20, the subject property here is zoned as a suburban reserve pursuant to the county of Lake zoning ordinance, Section 9.3. Permitted uses allow for one single-family dwelling or mobile home, which will be constructed according to the residential construction standards of Section 10.20. That's also in Chapter 21. Regarding the violations for outdoors, open and outdoor storage, that's Chapter 21, Section 41.2. Pursuant to Section 41.12, Subdivision A, outdoor storage in any district shall be maintained in an orderly manner and shall not create a fire, safety hazard. Pursuant to Section 41.12, Subdivision B, Subdivision 1, outdoor storage shall not exceed an aggregate area of 100 square feet per lot. The subject property is .23 acres approximately. Pursuant to Section 41.12, Subdivision B, 3, open outdoor storage shall be completely screened from public view from all exterior property lines and any public roadway within one half mile. Mr. Markell, the appellant Markell, who's here today, he basically submitted a nuisance abatement hearing request form on May 9th, 2019. Basically, in his appeal there, he cited, or he's contesting or disputing the violations. His reasons are improper sight for junk and garbage and wrong information told. Here's an exhibit. Here's a copy, a true and correct copy. The order pertained to properties involved in the Valley Fire. The subject property is located, or was involved in the Valley Fire. The order allowed for the issuance of a temporary dwelling permit for the occupying of those dwellings not meeting minimum residential construction standards. This order has expired, expired on 10/1/2018. Appellant Markell is not considered a victim of the Valley Fires. He was not on title for the property involved at the time the executive order was enacted and therefore he could not benefit from the executive order or obtain a temporary dwelling permit under this executive order. Just some issues of note, just to define, the issue, the violation for 41.1, I'm sorry, for 10.20 for occupying a dwelling. Mr. Markell is residing in a motorhome. The definition under Chapter 21, Article 68, Section 68.4, it defines a recreational vehicle as a motorhome, travel trailer, camper, or camping trailer with or without motor power designed for human habitation for recreational or emergency occupancy, not for permanent occupancy. Mr. Markell is residing in the trailer as a permanent, in a permanent occupancy capacity. Also, just an issue of note, a diligence cert was conducted and there's no record of an application being received by the appellant for a temporary dwelling permit on file with our department. Now we'd like to get into the investigation or the fact pattern here. On February 11th, 2019, the subject property was granted to appellant Markell. He's reflected on title. This is when he became on title and owner of the subject property. In April of 2019, a citizen complaint was received alleging an individual living in a trailer with no power or septic. This is what prompted our investigation and initiated us to go out to the site to inspect it. On April 3rd, 2019, we conducted our initial first site visit. Basically, at that time, we observed two violations on the property. One, Mr. Markell was occupying a trailer as a permanent dwelling. We spoke and made contact with Mr. Markell. He admitted that he was living in the trailer and he had plans to build a permanent structure, although he had not applied for a building permit at that time. We also noted issues for trash, junk and debris. That would be the violation for open and outdoor storage. Here is exhibits. This is the trailer as we approached the property. There's the trailer with the truck in front of it. And again, a trailer, truck, and Mr. Markell is centered in the middle there. On April 17th, 2019, we conducted a second site visit. And again, we saw that the violations we saw in our first initial visit persisted. Again, the violation for residing in a permanent, or residing in a trailer as a permanent occupancy, trash, junk and debris. We took additional pictures at that date. Here are pictures of the address sign and the junk and debris. This is the trailer again. On May 2nd, we, 2000, I'm sorry, that should be 2019, I apologize. A third site visit was conducted for the subject property. Again, we observed the continued violations that persisted on the property. At this date, we also issued Mr. Markell with a notice of nuisance and the order to abate and a picture to document that he was served in person. On June 26th, 2019, while serving Mr. Markell with a notice for this hearing here today, we observed additional new violations. These violations are not the subject of the appeal that we're here today for. These are currently being investigated and handled, but we observed violations for having more than six cannabis plants on the property. Mr. Markell claimed that he had a medical prescription that allowed him to cultivate the numerous cannabis plants that he has on his property. And so these are new violations that we are currently investigating and planning to take action on. At this time, we are recommending that the appeal made by Mr. Markell is denied. And that's the end of our presentation there.
Thank you. And Mr. Markell, if you would like to, your side?
Yeah, I just want to start it with.
You can get a little closer to the microphone. Thank you.
I'm okay with that.
We have to have it on record.
Okay. Yeah, it started with waiting for SSI for like close to nine years, became homeless.
We can give you a second, it's okay.
So I did lose in the fire, but it was Sonoma County. So my family wrote off an estate that was close to $3 million and my stepmom got most of the money. And then I was issued $25,000. And so the money came through at the same time, the money came through at the same time as the SSI. And so I was holding a check for $25,000 just as the social security started. So I wasn't given any of the back pay of five years, which I expected to have, spending with the $25,000. So I went to a lawyer and the lawyer said to spend the money within four days. He said unless they'll stop your check because you have money. So they gave me four days to spend the $25,000. Being homeless, I just wanted a place. So ma'am, this is all I could afford was up there. I'd lived in Whispering Pines for a few years. I lived in Whispering Pines and knew I liked the area. Saw this lot up there. Was able to afford just a lot, knowing the other money was coming. At the end of the year, I expected about a $25,000 back pay of social security that a lawyer's working with. I'm just not up there trying to grow some pot and stuff. Once they take the trailer, if they take the trailer, I just figure I might as well be doing something wandering around my property. I might as well grow my pot that I can't afford. I smoked pot for a neck injury. My neck injury actually turned, social security turned into not being able to deal with people or supervisors. The lot that I'm on is away from everyone. It's far enough up where anything there is behind my trailer. The stuff under the tarp is a chainsaw and a suitcase. If I knew coming in, I wouldn't have paid off the land right away. I would have paid the $6,000 in permits. But just being homeless is why I'm so emotional about. I've seen one judge before, I've never seen five. As far as I know, I'm more of a hazard to the, to the street of just going out and staying in my truck down in the town or something. I'm from Sonoma County, but don't really have much ties going back there at all. I've just asked for a temporary, maybe till the end of the year, be able to square up with building something out there. As far as nuisance, I'm on that last house on the street. When you look from the front, all you can see is the edge of the trailer. Unless you walk onto any property, you can't see any of that boards up to the side. I stayed in the truck up there in March, so I know that it snows and stuff, so. Even at that point, if the trailer was to go, I would ask that I can stay in my truck on the property until this money other comes through. I don't really want to get into a, I can't afford a money pit thing or, I'm not trying to benefit like it says up there. As far as the pot, that's something I've grown since a long time, some I use, don't drink anymore. I've four DUIs in the past, I haven't drank in 15 years. And as far as this tiny home, I'd be able to do that myself. I've built enough stuff for everybody else. I know what I'm doing, but that, and I can't afford it, but not until the end of the year. Most of it is us because I have a dog that I care a lot about and it's real hot, you know? That became my day up on this mountain, you know? Trailer's not hooked up with water, PG&E or anything. I'm doing no impact to anything. I go use the State Park bathroom at Bog's Mountain, which is right across the street, take my dog up there and it's a daily thing of using the bathroom. That's, that's about it. So I would ask for maybe a temporary position on it.
Can I ask you a question? Is your truck able to remove the trailer?
No, actually, no. I bought it from somebody that had a big old Dodge Cummins diesel and it ripped the jacks off trying to pull it in there and he said he hit turbo in the driveway. My truck's a 97, 1500 Chevy and that's Cobb Mountain and stuff. I wouldn't even trust myself. He's good, he has the big mirrors and he was good with getting it up there. I tried to ask them about bringing it back, but that was why he sold that to me for $2,500. I still owe half the money on something I'm trying to take. Just as a homeless person, no doubts, not to be homeless again in my truck. I have a neck injury, it's real hard to deal. This guy, I'm just embarrassed at this point. That's about all. I really have no, nothing else to say. Why I put in proper information is I was told you can't get any permit at all because you didn't lose the house. Then I was told you can get a builder's permit, but you have to have all the permits done. So I'm looking at, when I first bought the house, I thought, I thought it'd be like a builder's permit, it'd be like $6, $800 or something. I'm looking at $6,000 because of the $2,000 septic, $1,100 PG&E pole and a $200 for water. And then on top of that, the tiny home, just the permit on that is $2,200. That's, that's a tiny home. It's barely bigger than my trailer is. It's 10 by 36. But that's something that, I mean, I'm gonna be up there. That's all I can say. I'm gonna be there and stuff. And now it's like, the whole pot thing just became, okay, well, if I'm stopped doing any building or using a shovel, I'm going to go to what I like to do, which is grow some pot that I smoke that costs a lot of money. I've no kind of money for that. Paying the trailer back, I've been having a hard time even with eating. That's all. I would ask for some temporary, you know, I don't know, I'm not really causing any impact up there. I just feel like I'm taking the time out. I'm sure you guys have way better stuff to do.
Is there any questions from the board?
I was really told to spend this money so fast. Didn't know anything about permits and stuff. I do have money coming to, you know, to, or at least not kept cited for my truck being on my own property for the dog and stuff. Just to be able to stop continuous citations or something would, would be what I would ask for. Of being on property that I paid $20,000 for, that I have another maybe $25,000, $30,000 coming to do somewhere. That's about it, that's about it. Just embarrassed, but no.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, yeah, this is an unfortunate situation, but you know, it's a, it's something that we've, we've got to deal with. This is, this is what we make the big bucks for, making these tough decisions. And this is, this is not an easy one because, you know, we're trying to deal with the homeless population, we're trying to deal with a lot of stuff, we're trying to be compassionate at the same time. But there's other people that deserve that compassion as well and those are the people that truly did lose everything up there and they're trying to rebuild and they're, they're the ones that reported this to me and I passed it on to the staff and staff is dealing with it appropriately. It does have an impact. And I was reading this while you were going through your slides, so, did you show an aerial photo?
No, I did not.
Do you have one?
I have one here.
Okay. Because I think it's important for the board to see that this is not just some remote out in the middle of nowhere thing. This is right in the middle of a residential area, right, Pine Summit area, where people who used to have houses and trees and everything else to kind of hide what the neighbor was doing, you know, two blocks away.
I'm on two empty lots next to me that they haven't cleared. One next to me and one across the street.
Let me finish. People can see you from all over the place up there, so it's not.
I'm just saying, you're asking me to actually build right now in something. PG&E left piles behind me. I have one abated house that is a lot next to me.
And that's a problem too.
And across the street.
I can't talk if you're going to continue to talk and so, you know, and I realize you're upset, I realize that.
I'm not upset.
Well, you are and you have, you have every right to be.
I have better stuff to do than let this kind of stuff upset me.
We can't waive our rules, our rules are there for a reason. I mean, it's just, it's just the way it is. And some of them, if they're not good rules, they need to be changed, not, not twisted and bent, you know, to accommodate somebody's story. And, you know, we have other people to consider up there as well. If we allow one person to live in a trailer without any, any, first of all, it's not healthy at all. I mean, it's not, you can't live in a situation where you don't have electric or power in that situation like that.
I live in a car, sir.
Again, again, I can't talk while you're talking, I didn't interrupt you.
I'm just saying, I live in a car already. So when you're comparing it to anything, it's not that much. It's not that much. My truck is way more important.
Okay, I can't, I can't support the appeal. I could go on and on, but I think other people.
You don't have to, you don't have to.
Well, I'm not allowed to because you won't stop talking.
He was more than nice to me four or five times.
What's that?
He was more than grateful. He really was a nice guy.
I get it, that's good.
He did, I just want you to know that. As enforcement, he really handled.
There are spaces available, there are properties available that will allow you to park your trailer legally.
I never wanted the trailer.
You can hook up and all that and then you could, you know, be able to track and work on your house. I mean, there are other options available, but one of them can't be to live on a vacant lot without facilities in a residential area.
Okay. But I can stay in my truck on any public street. So that's, that's what it came down to with the county, right? I can stay right out front every day and stand up and walk around the garden and clean my property up and at least with the trailer gone. See, once this happened, I was not able to flatten the property out at all. It's only about a two feet off and I've had two months there of not being able to do anything with the trailer on it. I can't even, so, it's kind of a 50/50. Not really worried about it going too much, you know, just hoping that I can actually get it back for the winter time. That's all. If it takes, if it has, if it has to go of being able to have the same thing, but all permitted, I just didn't think it was going to be that much. Became a financial thing.
I'm not going to lie, it's not expensive. It is expensive for the permits and all that kind of stuff.
No, it's not way out of line, I just didn't know it. I just didn't know.
It costs money, you know, to figure out how to pay these folks and all that, but that's why the permits are the way they are. But it's a residential area, right?
Well, I'm residential, I'm going to be sitting in my truck though. That's all it is. The difference between sitting in my truck.
That doesn't define residential.
At 100 degrees or having my dog underneath the trailer, keeping cool. That's all it is, pretty much. And keeping my, my tools. That's all that, you know, I'm going to be building a house out of a truck instead of something with more space, whatever. That's all.
This doesn't apply, this doesn't qualify for the, the Hammers for Hope.
I was going to let you do that talking. Yeah, Mr. Markell, I will give you a card after the meeting, you can give me a call. I think you need to look into all the agencies. I'm going to find that question out and make contact.
Yeah, there may be some funding sources available for that type of thing.
I've really tried to do stuff for myself all my life.
With what?
I've done everything so far myself.
Well, I think there may, you know, that's exhausting.
I haven't used any agencies and free food and stuff. I don't know how I've done it.
But it sounds to me, sir, it sounds to me like you're in a situation where you're in front of us and you need, and you need some help.
Yes, sir.
And so doing things on your own has, has brought you to this situation that you're currently in. And so if you haven't reached out to social services, if you haven't reached out to any other agency that can offer you some help to get you in a situation where you no longer have to be in front of us, I, I would say please reach out to those agencies.
Well, I already got my help with the social security finally after nine years.
The social services, not social security.
That's all, that's fine.
And so that, they may be able, I'm not promising you they will, but they may be able to find a program that can help you to get a more stable environment.
I'm more talking about, I'm more talking about other agencies like Hammers for Hope, Hope City, things like that, because there's some money available and it's got to be used. Otherwise, it's got to be shipped back to Sacramento.
We definitely are, so I will give you, I'll get you. We definitely are, so, I will give you, I'll get you a card before we go. Um, I, I think today what we have in front of us, so, this is something we're all dealing with, I think myself and Rob dealing with it more in our districts now since the valley fire, and I commend you guys, uh, from community development moving through this, these are tough conversations we're having right now, but really what we're looking to try and do is, uh, make sure the folks like Rob, uh, pointed out that are rebuilding at this point, um, have an opportunity to make sure that their community is, um, being rebuilt by everybody. And so i- it is a tough decision we have to make today, but, uh, yeah, I think, um, what's in front of us today, I, I would agree with the recommendation at this point, but I also wanna, you know, hopefully make contact with you and see if there's something else. Owning the property is a very important part to start to rebuild, so that's where we are.
I really, I really just, I think that those programs, that if I go near that and stuff, they're, they're, that's just a space for somebody that really needs it.
Well, I think, I think you, you were in that place that you really needed, and I think you need to look at it, that it's not a handout, it's a hand up, it's trying to, you know, you're, you're now part of our community, you own property, our community, and we wanna help you. So I really think you need to reach out to Supervisor Simon.
I can try, I can try.
And, and let him help you.
I just really feel that there's, like, I don't have any children and stuff, and there's people that have children, different people that would need it more than me.
Mr. Markell, let me, let me just tell you something real quick, and I, I appreciate that, it's honorable that you're doing that, but this is, um, this is money that's been made available by a grant by the state of California, some of it, there's other money that's been donated, millions been donated, one million was donated by one entity, just for the purposes of trying to get things rebuilt in the valley fire. They're, they don't judge people, and some of the, there's some criteria, as far as, um, you know, if you, if you meet a certain income threshold, then you may not qualify, but you, you, as far as income, it sounds like you would qualify. This is not, uh, this is not a handout, this is rebuilding our community, this is money that's going back in our community, the money's being spent locally, um, and, you know, it creates a tax base, so there's some benefit to everybody involved, including you. And I think it's something that you should take advantage of, not as a handout, but this is part of rebuilding Cobb and, and, uh, you know, Middletown Anderson Springs, it's an important part of it. If the money's not used, some of that money, if it's not used by November, I think, right?
January, yes, absolutely.
January, okay, January, then it goes back. We've, we've been, had this program in existence now for about three years, we've given everybody an opportunity, and there's still money back, so, the, so for you to think that this money could be better spent with somebody else, we're down to the point where everybody's getting taken care of, everybody that's applied, that qualified, has been taken care of, so, it's not, it's not like that at all, in fact, if you don't take advantage of it, it's money that's gonna be going back somewhere, uh, you know, that, that, you know, could, could, needs to be used. So, try to work with MOKE, I was on that committee for a while, I stepped down, MOKE took over, I'm very familiar with it, I, it all started, you know, so I know what it's about, and even if they can't help you, they have resources available through other agencies and entities that can, let, take advantage of that, in the, in the positive sense.
I'll try.
And, and, and one last thing, I can't, you know, I've dealt with staff on so many, MOKE knows, and I think we all do by now, but dealt with staff on hundreds, if not thousands of issues by now with all the fires, and I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate the sensitivity that is expressed by staff in each of these incidents, I appreciate that, I think it's important, um, and it's not, they're, they're not just robots up there, they're people, some of them, some of our staff lost homes of their own and continue to work to help others, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, my dad lost a big business on Markwell Street.
Yeah, yeah.
It just happens to be down the street, it was a gun store that was out there, it's nothing but healthy county, but anyway, I ended up with twenty-five thousand instead of a lot of money, it would've been as much as that whole neighborhood, every house, so that's as far as, that's how much, um, respect I have for the Broke's County telling me, I grew up in Marin County and stuff, so, I'm just embarrassed by this whole thing.
There's no reason to be embarrassed.
The Broke's County telling me, uh, to move my trailer, I haven't even paid off. That's basically what it comes down to, it's just...
Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, two things, uh, Mr. Beltrama, am I saying that correct? I just wanted to say thank you for such an in-depth presentation, I've gone through a lot of code enforcement presentations before, and you giving us every bit of history, photo evidence, uh, just the whole presentation was superb, thank you very much, first time that I've seen you make a presentation, and I'm really happy about it, and I hope that sets the standard for all the future presentations, uh, so thank you very much for your diligent work on that, uh, and I'm sorry to...
You had a good teacher here.
I would like to comment on that too, he was up there three, four times, I was not exactly the friendly person.
And sir...
He handled himself really well.
And, and sir, sir, I'm gonna ask you a favor, I heard you say multiple times, I'll try, please don't think about it, please do it.
Yeah.
Reach out for the help that is available to you, I, I do not wanna travel around this county.
I'm not a big money person.
Hold on, sir.
I'll tell you what, I go walk my dog, I don't care, I really don't. My neck hurts really bad enough to work, it just goes right on me. I got burned out so much money, I don't even wanna hear about a grant.
Can I, can I...
I can't, he owns three houses in Kelseyville, I could not, you know, my dad owned three houses in Kelseyville.
Hold on one second, hold on one second.
Cause he didn't lose that house?
Okay, hold on one second. Supervisor Sabatier wants to finish his comments, hold on one second.
I'm trying to offer you a life lesson, get rid, get rid, get rid of pride, and take advantage of what we are offering you, cause pride has led you to this, and I do not want to walk around our county and believe that we are in the situation we are because people are not taking advantage of what we are offering to you in return.
I understand, I do understand.
There are great programs, take advantage of it, don't try, take advantage of them. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything further from the board? Now, did you get sworn in, Joan? Do we need to swear her in if she's gonna make public comment? Is there, if there's anybody else that's wishing to make a public comment, we need you to stand and raise your right hands. So if there's nothing further from the board, I'll then open it up to public comment, if you could state your name, and you have three minutes, please.
Joan Moss. I watch a lot of court, I do watch meetings, um, I think this individual has some special needs, and up in the courts, he would be referred to agencies, including Department of Rehabilitation, possibly Lake County Mental Health.
Okay, so, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask that we stop this, this is nonsense, no, I don't think you should finish your comments.
I have all that covered, but it's...
I would like to finish my comments.
I don't think that's any of your business at all.
I have all that, though.
I don't think it's any of your business at all.
I do have all that.
I have...
You know, I, I appreciate you, Joan, pointing that out, but I think, I don't think it's...
I would recommend a continuance so that he can get some help from agencies that are there, thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Yes, please state your name, you have three minutes, we could stick to the topic that we're...
This is Milos Lubr from Kelseyville, I just briefly wanna take it from a different angle, which is that the services which are talked about, of course they are existing, they cost incredible amount of money, which is the fiat money, that says we are broke, okay? So we have to find another ways, not just trying to Band-Aid it because we don't, as a society, we are broke, and also we are broke because people like this man are not able to pass and learn the basics, which are...
This is not on topic either.
Yeah, is it two minutes, Mr. Brown?
Not, only if it's on topic.
It's on topic.
So far it hasn't been.
Well, that's definitely a topic, because that's the other end of it, which you don't wanna see, so I think I said enough, because you should know how people lived here a few years ago, and anywhere else, and we might as well lived here the same way when, when we have another things happening to us. So we have to get ready, we have to get ready emotionally and practically, we have to use what we already have, not just throw more money at problems which are not solvable. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, there's somebody from the back that wishes to speak.
Thank you, board members, my name is Peter Lindquist, I have the dubious distinction of being Mr. Markell's neighbor directly across the street. When he first moved onto the property, living in his truck, went over, I introduced myself, and I did let him know what he needed to do to be a legal resident, i.e. the power, the water, the septic. And that was the only conversation that I had with him, and it was amicable at that point. A little over a month later, for reasons unknown, he started yelling, screaming, and flipping us off, and he came over, he assaulted me, he insulted my wife and threatened her. And all of this for his own reasons, he has been aware of what's required, and he has not done anything. In the three months plus he's been there, he oftentimes leaves the property for a total of twenty minutes a day. We are directly downhill from him, I am seriously concerned about waste, sewage, and other things that are, if they go anywhere, they're going on my property. And this, this has not been addressed in any, any manner, his septic has not been checked and re-approved. This is a health issue, plain and simple, my wife and I are both disabled, we were burned out in the valley fire, we have rebuilt, we have followed the rules, we are not rich, and we just want to live quietly in a place and with people who we enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the public? You know, if I could, I, I, I'm a big believer if things happen for a reason, and I think you're in the right place right now. Todd and Crystal, could you maybe, hold on, could you bring up your cards maybe, maybe he could reach out to get some assistance?
I wanted to say one thing, I didn't just go off as a neighbor all crazy fucking stuff. It's after this guy showed up with his, get the trailer out of there in ten days, he, he gave me some notice, I didn't even bring that up today, about, on here he writes, he writes move the trailer, and then go get a temporary, a temporary, um, permit for my thing, alright, and move the trailer within ten days, after he told me before when he was there, that I can't get one cause I didn't lose the house, then he writes on here to go get a permit, I'm looking at this, I come down to appeal this, which is like twenty dollars coming off Cobb in the Chevy truck, it's about ten bucks, it's like ten dollars at least, that I don't have to eat, so, he cites me on this one that I come down, he tells me it's a thousand dollars to appeal this one, but then says he really should've gave me this other one. And then when I look at what it's even there, and it says junk and garbage, there's no junk and garbage, I'm on a daily, taking it to my friend's house, I have friends up there, daily, there's no septic or anything that, that is my neighbor that called on me.
No.
Came over.
No, he's not, I'm gonna tell you right now, I was getting to that point, you, you assumed that, because...
I know that he is.
He is, I know he's not, I'm the one that reported it, and I know the neighbor that called me, and it wasn't him, I'd heard about him, this is the first time I've ever talked to or spoke to him.
Yeah.
It was not him.
Yeah, well, he's, the day I tried to drop a garbage off, as the escrow was going through, he came out crazy and started at first about get that shit out of here.
Everybody's touchy up there, I mean, everybody's touchy for a good reason, I'm saying too.
I'm saying, I couldn't drop a garbage can off on my land, with him approaching me. So I know people aren't nice when he came out and said hi, how are you, that's not why they're out called.
Okay, I just want to make sure you know that he was, he was not the one that reported.
Okay.
Hold on one second, Supervisor Crandall?
Just, you know, and, and I know when the first two folks came up to, to speak about what they were talking about, I deal with this, um, in, in, in other government before, and the more time you give in situations like this, when people need help this way, the way that you're indicating they need, it just allows more time for more work for these folks to come up and do the same thing they just already did. So, for right now, I feel we're at a point where we need to just move forward, he's already indicated he's ready to move forward, um, I appreciate your concerns about his mental health, if he decides to go after it, you know, I wish you the best, I hope you do, but I, I'm ready to move forward if anyone else is...
And, and I think you really need to reach out, Supervisor Simon, did you wanna maybe give him a card too, cause to reach you?
I'll get you one if you want.
And then there's two cards there, really, reach out, the community's here, I mean, you heard some, two people from the public, they don't even know you and they're concerned, so, we're a very concerned community and, and want to assist you.
I've been in prison five times over stupid shit, four DUIs, my record goes on and on, the only thing I would ask, you're putting somebody that is a hazard into a truck on your public streets with nowhere to go. That's my, that's, I'm a, I'm a hazardous to society person, gonna be living across the street from a guy that's been arguing and not liking me, in my truck.
Supervisor Brown?
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, I just don't feel, you know, I think it's inappropriate, insensitive, and inconsiderate to talk about somebody's state of their physical or mental state, when that's not an issue, I think it's presumptive, and I think it's, it's just absolutely inappropriate, um, to talk about that, it's their, their, their business and none of yours or yours. So I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, we're gonna get you...
Um, I just have to have like a, a time period to be able to move the truck.
Staff will work with you on that.
Marcus, if you could let him know, when, go outside maybe, and explain to him.
I'll talk to him.
Alright, thank you for all the help, I understand.
Mr. Markell, if you need help moving the trailer, call me, I'll, I'll get you help with that as well.
There's, there's a lot of assistance here. Okay, we are gonna take a five-minute break and then return. Everybody's, microphones are back on?
Yeah, mine's on.
Are you ready? Everybody's ready? We're ready, okay, so we're back in session, we're gonna go to our seven point, I know I made a plan, we're going off the plan. Seven point four, consideration of resolution, amending resolution number two thousand eighteen dash one thirty-two, establishing position allocation for fiscal year two thousand eighteen dash one zero one nine, budget unit number two-three-zero-one, Sheriff Jail Facility, Carolyn, Carol.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this, uh, resolution will correspond with item seven point three, which was the Lake County Correctional Officers...
Is your microphone, microphone?
This resolution corresponds with the Lake County Correctional Officers MOU that you just approved today under item seven point three, um, because of the new peace officer status, uh, that is afforded under Penal Code Section eight-three-zero-point-one-C, uh, we're recommending through this resolution that the Correctional Officer one-two classification be retitled to Deputy Sheriff one-two Corrections, that the Correctional Sergeant classification be retitled to Sergeant Corrections, that the Correctional Lieutenant position be retitled to Lieutenant Corrections. All of those changes are driven by the MOU, which, as I said, you approved earlier today, but in addition, this resolution also adds one Captain sworn classification for possible future use, depending on the staffing needs of the department. And so, um, those are my comments on this resolution.
I'm sorry, Miss, can you just repeat it?
Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Is there any questions or comments from the public? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution, amending resolution number twenty nineteen dash eight zero, establishing positions, allocations for fiscal year nineteen twenty, budget unit number twenty-three-zero-one, Sheriff Jail Facilities.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven point four, continued from June fourth, two thousand nineteen, Class K Housing in Lake County Limited Density Own, Owner Built Rural Dwellings Regulations and Draft Ordinances, request this to be postponed from July ninth, two thousand nineteen, to July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, so I need a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I could comment first, it's item seven point five, um, what the agenda states is that the Community Development Department is requesting to continue this to July twenty-third, uh, but staff just advised this morning that they will need additional time, given their workload issues, and so the request is that it be postponed to a date uncertain, if that's possible.
Okay. So then, is there any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? See none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion to continue.
Motion or consensus?
Motion or consensus.
I agree, I agree.
Definitely.
I consent.
Consent. Consent. Okay.
Thank you.
Don't go there.
Okay, then we will move on to item 7.6. Sitting as a Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of contract change order number one for the relocation of sewer facilities in Middletown Force, bid number 18-23, contract change order number one, amount of $29,664.97, revised contract amount $371,113.97.
Good morning, I'm Jan Coffinger, Lake County Special District's Administrator, and Scott Harder, the Deputy Special District's Administrator. And these first two items are Scott's project, so he will take those.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So what you have before you today, boy, that mic's hot, is consideration of contract change order number one for our force main relocation project in Middletown. What it boils down to is the contractor had to spend extra days looking for our facilities out there. The original force main was put in in 1989. Our record drawings had its location referenced off the, at that time, center line of the highway. In 1992, Caltrans realigned the highway at Dry Creek Cut Off significantly, and they did not coordinate with us, and so we did not have updated plans for that. So, when we started this project, when we went out there, the contractor was unable to locate our force main, and they spent about five extra days looking for it. Full crew at prevailing wage cost, about five or six thousand dollars a day with all the equipment and stuff in there, so we're looking at about $29,000 and change for contract change order number one.
Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Simon?
The only comment is, we know where everything is now, and in the future, we do any other projects or stuff, just making sure that we get that done, and we don't have that come up again, so.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from the public on this item? See none?
What's the entire scope of this job?
It was about fourteen hundred feet of, linear feet of force main relocation.
The scope of the whole job?
Yes. We relocated about fourteen hundred linear feet of force main. Oh, cost wise? It's three hundred and forty thousand.
Okay.
So, it's about eight percent, eight point seven percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It's within range.
Any other comments or questions? Then we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve contract change order number one in the amount of $29,664.97, and authorize the chair to sign, bringing the revised contract price to $371,113.97.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven point seven, sitting as Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of contract change order number two for the relocation of sewer facilities in Middletown, bid number 18-23, contract change order number two, amount is $2,964, revised contract amount
Yes, thank you. This is actually credit of $2,964. This change order is what we call a balancing change order, so it balances the actual in-place quantities with the estimated contract quantities at the beginning of the project. So, there's a little bit less pipe, the ARV valve did not need to be relocated, so those were deductive. So overall, it's a net deductive change order, a reduction in contract price of about $3,000.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to, for the contract change order number two in the amount of $2,964, $2,964.01, and authorize the chair to sign, yet bringing the revised contract price to $368,149.97.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven point eight, sitting as a Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of contract change order number four with KJ Woods for Anderson Springs Sewer Collection System for an increase of $31,993.31, and a revised contract amount of $6,998,034.48.
Thank you. This is a collection of items that we compiled after going through our, we're in the cleanup phase of this project, kind of a punch list and cleanup phase, and this is a series of items that we have for a change order. Now Carolyn just informed me that the change order itself did not upload into Granicus, so I guess you don't have that. I do have the items outlined in the memo, if you have any questions, ask me, or I could read each one line by line, but the...
Can I sit there?
Oh, okay, okay, then. So, rather than reading them all, I'll just ask you to approve, it's a total change order of $31,993.31, which is less than about a half percent of the overall contract price. And, uh, it was...
Is there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve change order number four in the amount of $31,993.31, for revised contract amount of $6,998,034.48, and authorize the Special District's Administrator to sign.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan and Scott. Okay, our seven point nine item, consideration of the provision of backup power at county buildings. Susan.
Actually, Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a couple introductory remarks, and then Susan is going to present the specific proposals on behalf of Lars Ewing, our Public Services Director, who's away today. So this discussion began over a month ago, as you recall, Madam Chair, when you and I convened a meeting of department heads to talk about how best to meet our business needs in light of the power safety shutdowns that seem imminent, although thus far the summer has been somewhat mild. It hasn't happened yet, but we expect that it will. And as is always the position of our department has, the beginnings of our discussions were really not about seeking generators, given the incredible expense of doing so. However, having a roundtable discussion about it with all of our department heads contributing, it really became apparent after a very brief discussion that the loss of business operations during the time that we were shut down, the cost of that, the lack of services provided to the public, our employees not being able to work, those combined costs, costs and losses in our communities would quickly outweigh the cost of generator power. And so, to my surprise, quite honestly, we moved in the direction of scoping our generator needs and pricing what that would cost, and so that's what we're here before with you today, and I'll turn it over to Susan.
Great, thanks. Yes, I am.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. She just shortened my presentation a little bit, which is great. At the request of this board, the Public Services Director Lars Ewing conveyed the space committee on June 27. Supervisor Simon and Brown participated in this meeting, after which the presentation, the actual committee recommended the following facilities to have backup power installed based on their justifications and need to provide service, either state mandated or otherwise. So animal control located at Hellbush Drive in Lakeport, behavioral health located at 7,000B Cell Center Drive Clear Lake, child support services located at 3980 Guard Street in Kelseyville, social services located at 15975 Anderson Ranch Parkway Lower Lake, and victim witness services located at 4202nd Street in Lakeport. At this time, the agricultural center does not have a recommendation regarding power backup. The departments are present to answer any questions you may have regarding their requests. Did you want them all to come up, or do you just want to do it in the order that they are in your agenda?
We're actually gonna go out of order because one department needs, but we'll do that as I call each item.
Okay.
So this is just, I guess...
That's kind of the introduction, introduction associated with this portion of...
Right.
So then we'll bring up each generator power in its own agenda item, so if there's any public comment, if you could, I guess, hold it till we bring up that one item, unless you have a general question.
Promise.
Supervisor Brown?
So, I'm unclear on the purpose of having department heads come up, are they, are we justifying why they have a need and, I mean...
Susan.
Our idea, our thought was that if you needed further justification outside of their staff reports, that they'd be available.
Got it, okay, yeah, we're not asking, okay, so, thank you, because they did that, and I, for full disclosure, I was on the road, and so I participated in probably half, I don't know how much, because I missed part of it. The phone didn't work, wouldn't allow me to call back in, and anyway, I didn't get a call back, so.
Supervisor Brown, there are also budget transfers that would be needed if you approve these purchases for each of the affected departments. Some departments have their own funding sources, and some would be looking to the general fund for those.
Yeah, okay.
And so we can clarify all that as we...
Yeah, and I, I'm, you know, for me, I just, I don't need justification by the departments. Everybody can justify why they, and I'm not gonna second guess now, I'm not gonna, you know, I don't wanna imply devaluing their importance to the county by saying, "Well, you guys could just go home that day," because I really don't know, and I'm not gonna trust their judgment on that and judgment of admin. What I'm looking for is justification as to why we're gonna split these all up instead of, and Bruno, for another full disclosure, Bruno, I had this discussion yesterday about, you know, why we're not putting this thing out to bid. That's the big question that I'm gonna have. Not justification as why they need it, justification as to why we're piecemealing it, coming from different sources, yeah, why isn't that happening? So maybe somebody can give me a compelling argument as to why we're not doing that.
I'll make every effort to do so. It's the timing, the noticing, the turnaround that we, you know, once, if you go out to bid, then you order, and then you have to wait for it to be received. This way, it shortens that time by removing the noticing requirements and the full informal bid process.
Oh yeah, okay, so the challenge that I would have if I was somebody selling generators or installing them is, you guys have known about this for a year, and now all of a sudden it's an emergency, you have to get this thing out. I think, and maybe Anita can fill us in on what would be the turnaround time for putting this out to bid. I don't think it would be that much of a delay. You know, like I said, when I prefaced at the meeting that we were on the phone, this is a big hoax by PG&E to begin with. I'm not saying they're not gonna shut the power off, I'm saying I don't think they need to. I think it's all a crock, and, but, that we have to live with. This is like Y2K, this is like, you know, the swine flu, it's like the measles epidemic, it's a big deal, and it's really BS. So, but we have to deal with it, that's our job to have to face it. And, but in the meantime, we have known about this, it's not something that just came up this last week that we have to identify because it's an emergency now, it might be an emergency now, but it hasn't been for the last year, and we have an obligation of the public, the taxpaying public, to make sure that this thing is done properly. Outcome may be the same, I don't know, but there's a process in place for a reason, and I think we really need to honor that, so. Maybe Anita wants to discuss that.
Well certainly, if it was, if your board decided to do this, you could do an expedited bid process. I mean, for the same reasons that you can decline to use a formal bid process, you can do an expedited one, so that would be up to your board.
Two weeks?
If what you're looking for is uniformity. You'd have to ask staff whether, you know, that would be practically possible.
But legally, would that be okay?
If your board decrees that the circumstances require an expedited bidding process for this particular thing, then just as you would decide you don't need a bidding process at all, you could, you could decide that. That part would be up to your board, but staff would have to tell you whether from a practical standpoint, that would be workable, or if it would just be two weeks' worth of time that wouldn't contribute to anything.
So Katie Galvani is here, and, I mean, in the office, and we could invite her to come in and, and offer her opinion on an expedited bid process and how fast her department could get that out. I mean, certainly the specifications are already, those are, yeah, we already have those, so...
I think that's fair, if, I mean, if the rest of the board wants, I mean, that's me.
Does that sound reasonable?
I, maybe it'd be good for, maybe to hear what she feels, if it would, how fast that could go, and how much work it actually would be to do that.
Well, is it something that the rest of the board wants to even consider? Because I don't wanna waste anybody's time either, if there are already thoughts in place that, you know, it doesn't make any difference, we need to move forward, I don't know. I'm just saying for my, for my own sake, so.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, Lars did a good job at the space committee, kind of rolling out his thoughts on why he thought this was the best path for us, without going out to bid, doing the individual, breaking it out. You know, he's not here, obviously, he knew that he was gonna be on vacation, we actually kinda pushed him and said, you know, we need to get this thing moving a little bit here to get it back to the entire board. I thought that he had a good plan rolled out, you know, they looked like they put the consideration in, each department did, obviously. There are a lot of mandates that we went over and discussed, where this is mandated to be done in some, a lot of the departments. Most of the, the cost that's gonna be coming out, isn't gonna be coming out of general fund, most departments do have funding for this, and I thought Lars had worked with all the heads of departments, and Susan, to really come up with a plan to rule this thing out. Agreements on, you know, the PG&E issue, but, you know, always, I've always approached this as, this is just something we need to do overall. We just had a 7.1 earthquake down south, at any day, we could have an earthquake here in Northern California. Having backup power and opportunities is always something that we need to do if we're gonna be here on our own, which we will be as a local community. So, I know that's kind of off the subject, what we're talking about as far as PG&E power shut offs, but this is really making ourselves self-sufficient. And I think that the long-term plan that we had talked about for, obviously, solar power, backup generation, different type of opportunities for the long-term sustainability here for the county is very important. Backup generation seemed to be the closest thing, and I thought Lars' plan to rule this thing out, in the manner that he did, would be the way to do it without going out to bid. You know, he explained that, you know, putting this thing out to bid and getting one company to do all the jobs at once, we're not the only ones doing this, they're doing this all over, and to get something to be done uniform would take a little bit more time to get done, so. I think calling Katie over would be fine, and I really wanna thank all the department heads and everybody who had these discussions to get them started, but I thought that there was a lot of thought put into place of how we're gonna get this stuff implemented, all the way down to whether it's a county-owned facility or not, who's gonna be buying the transfer switch, what property we would own after if we need to move things, so I thought there was a lot of work, hard work, and a good proposal put together with the space committee. Those are my thoughts.
Supervisor Sebastian?
So I'll start out by saying that my focus since coming into office in January has unfortunately not been what's coming up in summer and fire season and being prepared for it, so I've failed to make sure that this was a priority. But I think overall, and I'm gonna echo what Supervisor Brown said, we have known about this for a long time, and now it's an emergency for us to deal with it because the emergency is here, when really, we should have been dealing with this earlier. I think that we are up today, we have $470,000 worth of potential generators to look at, but we can't forget that we also have the $200,000 that we approved and the forty, for the courthouse, and the $40,000 we approved also for the sheriff, so now we're up to $730,000, and none of that has gone through the approved formal bidding process, and I can't move forward personally without doing a formal bidding process. That is too much money, yes, some of that comes from the state, but who pays the state? We all do. It's all tax dollars, it's all coming from us at one point or another. And I just don't feel comfortable with using an emergency that we should have taken care of and dealt with earlier to potentially spend more of our tax dollars on something that we may only use once a year, something we may not use at all this year. There's just so many what ifs, I don't, I am not against the idea of keeping us active and productive during times of power shutdowns. I want that to be possible, but I don't think it should come at us spending more than what we have to because we didn't act when we should have acted, and I think that we have to go through the formal bidding process, this is too much money to continue, and by piecemealing it, instead of putting it all together as one, we've just shot ourselves in the foot to potentially get a reduced cost of the entire package of what we should have, what we should have needed. And so, I'm, just to tell you right now, I'm gonna be voting no on every single one of these because I don't think that is the right process to do for that kind of money.
Supervisor Brown?
So, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm hoping I'm speaking for Bruno, because I'm speaking for me, when you say, "We weren't prepared," literally means "we," not "you." Staff has done everything that they were asked to do by us at the time they were asked, it hasn't been, you know, OES was informed through the disaster council of this, that's when, that's when they were first notified. I was sitting right there, came up, talked, I sat there and I listened, we're going, the next thing, I said, "No, we need to focus on this for a minute because this is a big deal, gonna be a big deal." And, so, you know, we, we had no idea what was gonna happen, you know, the lawsuits and all that kind of stuff, so it didn't seem like PG&E would be pulling this. But I'm looking at the, this, I'm building up to a question I have here, I'm looking at the two-week forecast, which isn't always correct, I get that, but it shows, it doesn't show extremely high temperatures, nothing into the hundreds or anything like that, a few days it's in the high nineties, like, two days out of two weeks. Wind, wind's not that bad, so I'm not expecting that, I think those conditions have to be met, I know there's, how dry it is and all that, for conditions, for them to actually shut the power off, they notify us, but, so the question is, would two weeks give you enough time to do some kind of a bidding process to do it? And, again, you know, we're dealing with a lot of different issues, it's not just this power. I'm getting hit up from people, "Why aren't we putting it out to bid for the garbage service? Why aren't we putting," you know, there's a lot of things that, that we, we just allow the contract because it's worked, and we were convinced it's worked, like, like Moke said. Lars has gone through all this, and he's got concerns about going out to the bid process, but the public doesn't know that, and they're not, they don't necessarily trust the process, even though we do. We need to make sure that the process is completely clean, completely transparent. We've done everything we can to meet our, our obligation to them to, to, you know, make, make everything work with the minimum amount of resources that we have available regardless of the source, so.
Madam Chair, if I might, just in regard to, to timing, looking at the purchasing ordinance, the, the timeline that I'm seeing is that publication of a notice for the bids 10 calendar days before bids are due.
Okay. So two weeks would work? Or, well, it would work for legal purposes, but practicality, I'm not sure.
That's, that's the other issue.
Yeah, that's the issue I want to make sure.
Lars will be back next Tuesday, and, but I'm, I'm confident that Bob Allen, Brian Powers, myself, and hopefully the help of admin and county council to get the bid out. We could do that if that's what.
Okay. And I realize there's, you know, I had a good point that, actually, he was relaying from Lars, that it's going to be hard to find somebody that can do all of them.
Right.
So maybe there's another way, you know, we can do, you know, multiple bids. I don't know. I don't know how that would work, but however.
And I have been in contact with Lars a little bit, so, in between when he has service, so I will talk to him as well and see what his concerns were, just in case it was something that was, you know, something so drastic that there's a reason we shouldn't move forward with this, but I'm sure he.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, I would note that on the agenda items, for several of them, there's no indication of contractor. It may be that some of them are using the same contractor for this. So I'm just raising that.
Okay.
So if we put it out to bid, it would be then lumping them all together, looking for one contractor to come in and.
No. That's what I said. We could either, we could do, we could do either do it that way, or we can do, you know, multiple bids. That's what I said.
I, I know that.
RFQ, yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I know that in the city of Clear Lake, for instance, for the road project they're working on in Meadowbrook Drive, they offered option A, option B, and option C in their bids, so that it's not just one package or a specific package. That way, we can get varying bids on varying projects. For instance, I'm sure social services is a different beast of a generator versus what we're looking for for animal control and other ones. So maybe we can go ahead and separate the large versus the smaller ones and see what kind of packages we receive. But I, I would be, whatever options we can get to see what reduced cost we can find, I think would be a benefit for us.
So going out to bid, because I'm not fully aware of how fast we could get these generators in, what would be the timeline, you think, if we went to bid for two weeks, that we could get these generators in place?
Well, some of the, the one we just received was potentially a four to six month, or four to six week delivery, but we ended up getting it a lot sooner. So I think it just depends on how, their availability. Could be right away, could be up to four weeks.
But it'd be a two-week delay, that's all. It's not going to be, it's like, if, whatever it is, the delay from today till then is probably going to be the same as the delay from two weeks from now till then, so. Two weeks, two weeks difference.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Just some of the discussion that Lars was having, obviously, it's not just purchasing the generator, it's also doing the transfer switches, getting everything ready in each facility and all those types of things. So, you know, I do know there's a whole process that he had kind of laid out and was kind of ready to move forward with, but I'll go with the entire board. I thought the Space Committee, we were given the information that we were needed, and it was brought back to you, to the board here, so the board will make the ultimate decision. But I myself sit comfortable to move forward with the proposal as is, and if that doesn't happen, then we'll go with what the board wants, and I know Lars and your department and everybody, all the department heads will get it done. So, understanding the process of going out to bid for certain instances, you know, this has been something on there, I definitely, I will take responsibility, saying on a board member that we're trying to move this thing forward quickly here and get these things done. But I know, since I've came on the board, we've been talking, obviously, and I know the previous boards were, about long-term solar power generation, battery backup systems, all those types of things. Takes time. One of the reasons it takes a long time is the bidding process. The RFP, getting it out there, the proposal, to do that process really drags things out. So I, I know that's where we are with it, but the board will make the ultimate decision. But I appreciated all the information that was given to me at the Space Committee.
We could put a timeline in on how soon they could get it to us as well.
Yeah.
Supervisor Brown?
Install.
Install.
Yeah. And we already have those, all that stuff. We got, we have all that information, we just need to, because it's been done in order to get the price that we already, we've gotten. But as far as like the solar discussion and the time it takes, I first put this on the board's agenda in 2004, so.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
We're getting closer, I know that. I know we're way closer than we were in 2004.
But that is not a, an issue of RFP and waiting for bids.
No, no.
Supervisor Crandall?
So, that's, that's exactly the calls that I've been getting about this subject is alternative power and whatnot, but I've had to explain, this is also for emergency services, whether it be an emergency that we're tending to now rather than earlier. That's the whole purpose of the generators. I, with, with the amount of calls and involvement that I've had with some of the constituents, I would feel comfortable with the 10 days just because of the, the concern, so. But I, but I do want to move forward with this because it is an emergent thing that we need, especially for the departments at hand. When you talk about power shutdowns, you're talking about the animals, child support services, social services especially, because I remember during the fire last year, I mean, it was a totally different situation, but our social services program at, at a different entity was needed immediately, and it helped. So, I think 10 days would be fine. I'm okay with that.
Two, two weeks?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the two weeks, but the 10 days that she mentioned, I'd be okay with that.
Okay. There's no.
Okay, let me ask you, you make, you have a good point, because, I'm sorry, can I?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, how much time would you need? Because we, we can have, we can meet anytime. We don't have to wait until Tuesday. If this is a big deal, then let's get the bids turned around in 10 days and have a meeting. I don't, I don't, I don't care about that. I just, what do you think? Schedule it for two weeks and then if it comes up?
Have a meeting before the Tuesday?
We do it Friday before. We have to.
A special meeting?
Yeah.
Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be Friday, the 26th, the morning of Friday, the 26th, special meeting?
If, if, I mean, I want to make sure that they have enough time.
Well, they, they would have to produce the RFP to go out.
Yeah. So two weeks is probably, two weeks is probably good.
Would you allow staff an opportunity to map out the timeline?
Yeah.
Susan is available to meet with Katie this afternoon and to talk about the timeline, and then we can work with the chair to schedule it ASAP. And if it involves a special meeting, we'll bring, we'll have that on your agenda next week, because I believe you need to take action to schedule a special meeting, or if it corresponds.
The chair can schedule it.
The chair can, okay. Or if it corresponds with one of your scheduled meetings, we'll do that.
Any further comment from the board before I open up to public comment? With that open up to public comment, is there any public comment on this item? See, no movement. Then this was, this item was just discussion. So then we'll go, start with all the other items. Should we have Katie stay, or?
My guess is that you're going to continue all the other items to a date, to a date uncertain. The dollar amounts for those other items would not likely be the same if, given that the bidding process may go a different direction.
While Brock's here, I want to just add one thing, if I could.
Yes.
Were you here at the last, when we talked about that?
A couple of meetings ago, when we talked about.
When we talked about the $25,000.
For this building.
About the $25,000 contribution that you guys made. Did we already talk about that?
I was not here for.
Okay, well, I want to make sure, yeah, that, you know, the, the donation that they made.
That offer's still out on the table.
Well, it's, we already, we already spent the money, so thank you. No, no, it actually helped us when we, to get this. It was, it was a big chunk of, of the cost of this, so I appreciate that. But one thing I did want to say, because this kept coming up, that, you know, they're spending all this money on generators and doing all this stuff, but there's no cooling centers on it. We're working on that too. PG&E is actually working on that. I sent them information on places that they can look at. They've expanded that conversation to those places, to you and all that. So it is being worked on, so I just want the public to know that cooling centers aren't without consideration, so.
Another related department that's come up is libraries. What about libraries? Why aren't they on the, the list? And the county librarian tells me that it's his intention to, to attempt to operate libraries without power if he can do so safely, so it would be like a trip back in time where people use books, so.
Back to the Dewey decibel system?
Exactly. So, there wouldn't be the Wi-Fi connection at the library, obviously, but there would be books, so.
Supervisor Simon?
I do just want to also thank Brock and the Education Department for putting that money up, but I know that Lars is looking at every agency that may be involved, even the fourth floor. I know there's conversations going on about backup generation, also some of our providers with the antennas on. There are conversations happening through public services to see if there are any other folks that would put in on this. And then just to elaborate on the PG&E cooling stations, there are many conversations we're having. We're trying, hopefully, if it does happen, we'd be working on getting something, hopefully, in every district if we can, but at least around the county. And I know those conversations are happening. That is something the public was saying, "Oh, you're backing up the courthouse and everybody can go to work, but what about us?" And we're always thinking about the general public first, with our employees coming in. Second, we're going to have them work. We've got to have them in good conditions to keep the services going. But those things are all being worked on, and hopefully, when it does happen, we have plans in place. And that is PG&E's responsibility and something they're doing, not ours. We're just working in coordination with the utilities that are doing this at this point. So, thank you very much for the hard work.
Supervisor Crandall?
Oh, I didn't even mean to have that up, really. I, sorry.
So then we need to then take each item up and move it to a different date, or?
If you're going to continue the items, you can, you can, if the department heads who are here have no comments on these items for your board, you could continue them collectively, asking for public comment in terms of if anyone's here who can't come back.
Okay.
First, we should thank them all for sitting here for two hours.
Yes, thank you.
And they may have comments that relate to how the potential delay would impact them. I want to invite, encourage them to say so if they do.
Any comments on?
All in the memo.
Read the memo.
Okay. So with Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I would like to get some direction, because if we just, if we're continuing everything or moving forward, it's just going to push it down the road. I would like if we could do something today, at least give direction that, right now, it seems like, from my conversation that I'm hearing, we'd like a shortened RFP to go out, working with staff, and just make sure we're all in agreement, because I.
Yes.
I would like to see all this stuff moving forward, not just, oh, wait till next week.
Right, right.
Moving this forward, I just want to make sure that we're getting that done today and, and we're giving you the direction that you need to move this thing as quickly as possible, coming up with the legal notices that we've got to follow, so.
If your board wants to make a motion for an expedited bidding process to try to encompass all of the generators that are the subject of the agenda today and any other needs of the county, with a target of approximately two weeks, or as much time as is necessary, keeping in mind again that it should be as short as legally possible.
So a motion made?
Okay.
Do we need to reach, read each item, or just?
Then you can just continue them by number.
Okay, so continue 710, 711, 712, 713, 714, and 715. Is that the motion, Supervisor Simon? Did I get them all?
There's still discussion, I think.
Just one question on 714, as far as the, this coming from the sheriff's central dispatch. Yeah, right, 714 is coming from the sheriff's department instead of public's.
714, okay.
714 is separate from the motion that you just made.
Yeah.
715 should be included.
715.
715, sure.
Not including 714.
Just wanted to make sure.
Sorry. I was just reading them all off. So that's the motion?
Yes.
And a motion?
In a second.
And have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And so then, our office will meet with Katie ASAP, and I believe you want to invite the sheriff's staff up so you can take up 7.14.
Okay, so we'll take up 7.14, consideration of budget transfer to the sheriff's central dispatch.
Sorry, guys.
Budget 2202 for the purchase of a backup generator for the Hunter repeater site due to anticipated public safety power shut off with authorization to expedite these funds prior to the approval of final budgets. Sorry, I tried to lump it all and.
I was going to raise my hand.
No.
Good morning. Chris Macedo from the sheriff's office. We found that we have needed to install a backup generator in our Hunter repeater site. It is the only repeater site in our existing repeater locations that does not have a backup power supply. These repeater sites, and particularly this one, provides two-way radio transmissions for both the sheriff's office and all of the fire districts that utilize that location in the county. It did go down and suffered some damage during the Ventecino complex fire, and was rendered inoperable for a short period of time until PG&E came up with a portable generator to put it back online and useful at that time. So, we have gotten a, an estimate for work from a local vendor, Coastal Mountain Electric, and Public Services also got a, a bid for a generator from Baker, which is a supplier that the county uses for lots of equipment that they purchase through. And we asked the board to approve this purchase and a budget transfer, so we can get this generator installed as soon as possible, so we don't have any type of downtime during a public safety power shut off that would put first-line personnel in jeopardy, as well as any of the citizens that serve that area during the time that we have ready communications.
Okay. Is there any comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the public on this item? See, no movement. I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Have you ever had a power outage before in that area where you've lost access to the two-way radio?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And, and what's your alternative for when that does occur, since it's happened in the past?
We had some small, little thousand-watt generators that we had.
So you've had to put up a generator in order to fix it?
Yes, and had to go up there several times to fill up those generators, and, but during a fire, if it was impassable, we would not be able to fill those generators up if it was unsafe to get up there.
Right, right. Okay.
There's no more questions or comments. I'm looking for a motion. There's no more questions or comments. I'm looking for a motion. Supervisor Simon?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve a budget transfer in the sheriff's central dispatch budget 2202 for the purchase of a backup generator at the Hunter repeater site due to anticipated public safety power shut offs with authorization to expend these funds prior to the approval of final budgets.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Supervisor?
Not opposed, sorry. I was, my hand went up for after that question.
Motion carries. Your question?
I'm, I'm wondering, and I'm very sorry to ask, can we reopen 79?
Yes.
The discussion?
Yes.
Before we move on?
Okay.
And, and my question is this. Lots of generators are.
Do we need a motion to open 79?
No.
No? Yes. We need a motion.
Motion to open 79, reopen 79.
Reopen. A motion?
One second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Reopening 7.9, consideration of a provision for backup power county buildings.
So my, my thought process, thank you for doing that. My thought process is, we're about to add a whole lot more generators. Do we have a mobile, mobile gassing unit to be able to travel and refill those generators in case it's more than five days or more? Because I don't think we have fuel tanks in locations that can allow for easy refills for those generators, because if the power is out for five or more days, then at one point, those generators don't work for us, and they don't do the work. And so I'm wondering, do we already have a mobile fueling unit?
Supervisor Brown?
If we don't, I don't think we do. But if we don't, during, during times of disaster, especially fires, those mobile units are everywhere. They're, they're filling up dozers, they're filling up water trucks, they're, you know, filling up all that stuff. And so, yeah, Chris probably has.
It depends on what type of.
Fuel.
Fuel source generator you're going to go with. This particular one is going to be propane-powered. So we've been working with a local contractor to provide the propane to go up there and fill that up. So whatever type of generators they're going to install, whether it be fuel or propane, the county does not have a fuel truck, per se, to go around and fuel these generators up, or a propane truck to do that. They'll need to work out with a contract. And if the county, what I would suggest, that the county either go with its, whoever its current fuel vendor is, if it does, if it has a propane and a fuel one, to maybe do an RFP for that. And, but I would suggest that they work with one that has a 24-hour backup power supply. So if they don't, the fuel vendor doesn't have that, that means they can't have a pump to pump the truck in. So they need to, we've been thinking about all that stuff already. There's a few fuel stations that are installing generators themselves, so they can fuel vehicles, because we have to worry about our fleet vehicle, patrol vehicles, that we can fuel our vehicles during those times. And all factors into who we're going to contract with or fueling our vehicles, who's going to come up and fuel our, our generators during these times. So we'd be happy to share that information.
Okay.
It's simpler to have maybe one or two geographically located around the county to, as well as a backup in case one's too busy and can't get to it.
Right.
I know at the department head meeting, Lars felt pretty confident that we'd be able to, to fuel all our, all the generators, the fuel trucks.
And I know we have a fuel tank here, because we talked about, we have like a 5,000-gallon tank or a 4,000-gallon tank here at the courthouse. I was just curious about the other places for continuing production. But it's something to keep an eye on and learn as we move forward and see how this really plays out.
Yes. Supervisor Brown?
Are these, these aren't dual fuel? Because most generators now are dual fuel. They do diesel or gas or, and.
This, this particular one is just propane.
Yeah, it's, it's in a real remote location, and they'll take a small, smaller vehicle to.
How big is the tank?
I don't know. Have we determined it's a 200-gallon tank? I'm not sure. I'm quite sure how, how big the tank is going to be up there.
Up to a 200, you could probably, a couple of guys could probably take a tank up if they had to, and it was already filled, so it's an option. Yep.
All right, I just wanted to bring that up.
Supervisor Simon?
Would you like to hear Susan's comment on the new one that has been brought here for the courthouse and what the fueling plan is?
Sure.
Yes, it's, it's a diesel. It's, it's at the base of the unit is the, is the fuel storage area. And we have contracted with Fuel Delivery Service, two men, not only for that one, but for the countywide generators. We also do countywide monthly maintenance on all the generators that are currently existing.
Supervisor Simon, did you have any more comments, sir?
No, I guess, just now that it was opened up, and I know we're doing the, moving up the bidding process on our everything, should, should we have done the budget transfers now so it's ready to go? Or wait for it to come back with the RFP and then do it?
I think we should wait. I think we should wait, Supervisor, because we don't know the amounts. The amounts might change.
I think that, wishful thinking, but okay.
The other, since the item is reopened, too, I, I thought it might be helpful to add some comments that came from our various employee groups during a meet and confer session. In response to the all-county email I sent out in early June, they asked to meet and confer. And as you can imagine, our employees have many, many concerns about being put in a situation where they cannot work, or perhaps even where there are a limited number of workstations and we have to somehow decide who works and, and who doesn't because of those limits. Obviously, employees are concerned about being put in situations where they have to use their accrued vacation time, or if, if they don't have vacation time, being put in a situation where, where they have to take no pay. So they're very interested in developing alternative work sites to the greatest extent possible, and, you know, interested in any other options necessary to, to support our, our workforce as well. And so the large generator that's already on site for the courthouse, it's still three to four weeks away from being operational because of the installation that goes along with it. So anyway, I just, I just wanted to, I know the work, the needs of our workforce are really important to your board, and I wanted you to be aware that we're dialed into their sentiments about all of this, too. Very important.
Thank you. There's nothing further?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I think I, oh, public comment? I'll put it to public comments, since we reopened it. See no movement. We will move on. I think I've completed all the open session items. So with that, we will go into closed session. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluations, title, County Librarian. And 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel, Decision Whether to Initiate Litigation Pursuant to Governance, Section 54956.94, One Potential Case. With that, we'll go into closed session.